Welcome to the May tenth, two thousand and eighteen Western Reserve Board Meeting. May I have roll call?
My calls?
Present.
Mrs. Potts?
Present.
Richard Levens?
Present.
Lisa Powell?
Present.
Tracy Sin?
Present. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the proud and faithful citizens, one nation, under God, in the great school with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to go down there at the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll begin with the treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the minutes of the April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting of the Western Reserve Local Board of Education be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved. I'll second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
It is recommended that the April two thousand and eighteen financial reports be approved and the April listing of bills be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended that the application for the Special Education IDEA/B grant be submitted for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen fiscal year. These funds are made available to help meet the needs of handicapped children. Input as to how these funds should be used is encouraged and will be accepted from the general public. Written comments should be addressed to Douglas McGlynn, Superintendent, Western Reserve Local School District. All ideas will be considered and should be received as soon as possible.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. For the purpose of finalizing year-end budget items, it is recommended that the special meeting of the Board of Education be held on June...
Can we do the twenty eighth?
I won't be here. I won't be here either. I haven't gone a lot to the June vacation. We do the twenty fourth, twenty third, November twenty. Yeah, I'll be on even pre-vacation, too.
Eighty-three. The week before is better?
I think I could do anything next week before.
Probably.
What about even like, could we do like a, maybe Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
I'm gone that week.
Oh, you're gone that week. But, I mean, you can be there and two others.
Can we back it up?
The week before?
Can you forecast the degrees?
Does it have to be on Jersey?
What about the week before? Who could, is there anybody here?
The twenty-first?
We're talking the week of the eighteen?
Yes, the week of the eighteen, but you guys here?
I'm here.
Except for Friday, the weekend.
What about Monday, the eighteenth?
What about the twenty-first?
I have to have it as close to the end of the month because the food's actually already validated. So it's going to be pushing at any minute.
Twenty-first is good for me.
Twenty-first or the twenty-sixth?
Either or, I'm good.
I can do the twenty, as long as you say.
Who could be here the twenty-sixth? You? Tracy?
Yeah, I think so.
And I can be, and Rich, her, what's his name? Mark?
What's his name?
Tim.
The twenty-sixth.
Birthday, huh?
You're saying twenty-sixth?
That's the day before's birthday. When's his birthday? My anniversary in twenty-seventh. It is birthday? His birthday's the twenty-first.
The twenty-first is the day before.
Twenty-sixth is what? Tuesday?
As long as I have three.
What day?
Twenty-sixth.
I'm good with that.
I know he can't.
I'm not sure.
But I can do the twenty-first. Let's go the twenty-first, if we can all be here.
Twenty-first.
Okay.
Does that give you enough time?
Twenty-first.
No, but I'll get it done. It's okay.
Twenty-first?
At six?
Or whatever time you want.
I could be here by five-thirty, if you want to do five-thirty.
I can do five-thirty.
That gives you half an hour left, even though.
It's going to be a couple twenty-four hour days, I'm sorry. Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, cool with you guys, twenty-first?
Yep.
No! I will make you cake. Five-thirty on the twenty-first, and we will celebrate March's birthday.
Does that make us two Thursdays in a row, though?
Yes. Well, we can move the regular board meeting to the twenty-first and do it all on the twenty-first.
Oh, we'd rather do that.
That'd be nice to do that.
You guys want to just get out and move the board meeting to the twenty-first and do it all on the twenty-first?
Write that down.
On the week before, or then come back.
That's fine with me.
Do you want to make it at six o'clock, then?
No, no, let's just make it at six.
We can do it at six o'clock.
All right.
So we're going to not come the fourteenth, but we're going to come at six o'clock on the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, six.
So no, six fourteen. We are six twenty-one.
I will.
Need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
It is recommended to approve the agreement between Western Reserve Local Schools and the HPS for a one-year period... What is HPS?
That is the consortium that the kitchen is a part of.
Okay. HPS for a one-year period with dues at a cost of seven hundred ninety-five dollars, forty-two cents. This agreement will allow the Western Reserve Cafeteria to participate in HPS school fund purchasing program.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the memorandum of agreement between Western Reserve Local Schools and Youngstown Mahoning Valley United Way be approved for a pre-kindergarten summer readiness program.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the following list of certified employee contracts be approved for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per effective salary schedules.
So moved.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
I'm honored to remind you that he will not be the actual marching band director because of his speed.
He will be.
I'm looking at some people, he's taking some applications, you see. Not sure, I have somebody who's interested. It is a lot, we did an O U.
But it can't be the same school, doesn't it?
What about you, Mark?
What?
What about you?
No.
That'd be great.
No, I know, I would be.
You would be. Perfect. I thought that's why you asked you.
Seriously, no.
No, I was, I know, I was thinking if there was a full position.
At least I will help you.
The person that I know has a job that I know he would like to... He's good. But, okay. It is recommended that Cosette Howe be granted a one-year contract as education media specialist for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per section six point oh seven three of the master agreement with Tower. Also to approve supplemental contracts for five additional days. See the attachment.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
I abstain.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Forgot.
Sorry.
I was like...
Motion carried. It is recommended that Gregory Melito be granted a one-year, one-hundred-and-eight-day contract as guidance counselor for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school years for section six point oh seven three of the master agreement with Tower. See the attachment.
Is that the part-time?
Yeah. So moved.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Jay Clark be granted a one-year contract as a teacher for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per section, as per section six point oh seven three of the master agreement with Tower.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Now is that, is that entirely retirees?
Yeah, those are the three.
Motion carried.
Any attachments, either letters or questions?
Yes.
It is recommended that the board approve the contract status for the classified staff for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per the effective salary schedules as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Can I get that one? Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the board recognize the following students who were inducted into National Honor Society two thousand and seventeen eighteen. National Honors Society deserves to have them. Carly Banks, Taylor Gardner, Amber Jones, Madison Owen, Ryan Slaven, Eva Chanel, Adam Gaitrell, Justine Knopf, Olivia Rep, Sarah Sudano, Morgan Eichert, Mitchell Braff, Riley Miller, William Rep, and Michaela Smith.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the report from the district's food service department be approved. See the attachment. Certifying the district is in compliance with Senate Bill two-ten, effective July first two thousand and eleven, pertaining to the guidelines for food offerings and portion sizes offered to students during the school day.
So moved. I'll second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the board adopt the attached Western Reserve Local School District's wellness policy.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
The wellness policy is, keep us in compliance with the kitchen policy that we have to deal with during the year. So we have that wellness committee. This isn't in the policy manual, this is simply like, we didn't get the policy. This is the wellness policy, so we need to have them as part of the policy.
It is recommended that the board approve the OSBA service agreement for the Ohio Policy Service Policy Development Quarterly, e-newsletter. See attachment.
That's where Doug gets the policy update.
Oh, good. Bring it back. So moved. I'll second.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the following resolution authorizing two thousand and eighteen nineteen membership of the Ohio High School Athletic Association be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Julie Larkin be added to the certified substitute list.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
It is recommended to hire Brett Powell as an assistant varsity football coach for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Powell?
I abstain.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended to hire Andrew Whitmer as assistant varsity football coach for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
It is recommended that Brian Shaner be hired as an assistant varsity football coach for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
Isn't he, wasn't he a coach somewhere else?
He was coach, uh...
Well, I know him from...
Georgetown City. And then he was the head football coach last year at Niles before he retired. He still teaches.
Uh, so moved. Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Jason Cogren be hired as an assistant varsity football coach for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended to hire Jennifer Lorenzi as the head varsity volleyball coach for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended to hire Kevin Conway as head varsity cross-country coach for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended to approve Angela Knopf... You silly? As unpaid volunteer cross-country coach for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved. I'll second.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended to hire Sarah Smith as a junior high cheerleading coach for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year as per salary schedule in effect.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Hey, principal reports. Debbie?
Um, we're in the home stretch now. We finished testing. This is always a nice thing. We finished yesterday, actually. So it's been a long road. Our kids work really, really hard, so that's... We had a couple of nice things going on. Last month, we had a snack and paint. We decided to do fundraisers, maybe a little bit different. The moms and their kids came and they snacked and painted, and we made a really nice amount of money for that. We have, we're doing a, what'd you call it? Art bot with dads. We didn't get as many kids because of baseball, so we might try to do that again in the fall. But that was kind of fun. We're going to make art robots that actually will draw on their own, so that'll be in the fall, so that's fun. I told you before that we have this alternative learning team. We were chosen by the Ohio Center for autism and low incidence, autism and low incidence for children that have like those kind of issues. We were chosen to be a school that is a bright spot, and so it will be on the Ocali website. So when it's up, I'll let you guys know. They interviewed us and looked at our program, which is very cool. With Special Persons Week, it was wonderful. It's always nice to see everybody and everyone's special persons. We had that last week. And this week, it's teacher and staff appreciation, and PTO knocked it out of the ballpark. Today has done something very special for all the teachers and staff and faculty the entire week. It's been kind of a different theme day. It was really nice today, you got a nice job. Things that are coming up, Sarah Smith is doing a great job as the guidance counselor. She's having vehicle day for our career day. So she has a ton of different kinds of vehicles and things coming to the school. She wanted to go get some like twenty-four century careers, uh, careers. So kids are exposed to something besides the fire department, ambulance. So she's really kind of thought above and beyond to try to get some really different careers. Next year, we're going to do something a little different to expand that, so. And really, she's, we're really looking at bringing in and getting, going to college and things, and getting people that can show our kids other careers that they're going to see in the future, so. PTO, guys, we're going to have a beach, a beach fashion at the end of the year, just celebrating the kids that have been working well. If you get a chip, go down the hallway, they do some really nice things. We have some kids that have put shout-out words on the wall, and they can just say nice things. It'll be done, we check them pretty often. They have a positive day, a positive quote that you can add to the positive quote board. So really just trying to have them recognize each other. We're doing a good thing. Awards Day is coming up, and Field Day. And then I think I told you guys about our little team of second graders. We've raised so far, we've, um, we have about twelve boxes of books that we're going to take to the Riche Center, and then we'll get the bookshelves built by Barrett Brothers. the Ridge Center, and then we'll get the bookshelves built by Barrett Brothers, so we're working with that. So that's what's been going on at Dalehead Middle School.
Good, good, thank you. Now?
Um, well, we have a handful of weeks left and a lot of stuff to get done, class activities. Um, it's just kind of a mad dash, so, um, we have prom tomorrow, which is always a big deal, and everybody gets really excited, prom day, um, we're gonna go to prom, Greg's landing, so that's gonna be an exciting, um, day. Um, we have the academic banquet coming up on Main Area, which we'll be getting some letters, so I'm just sending those out. Um, a couple of new things that we're doing this year, uh, one new activity that we are starting, uh, Mr. Altoria is leading it, it's called Battle of the Classes, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna have three days, March 23rd through the 25th, and we'll have different events. Uh, we have teachers who are gonna sponsor a grade level, and then those grade levels will compete against one another, kind of have like, uh, you know, really pushing the kids through testing, we're constantly on them. At the end of the year, it's, it's a nice way to kind of throw some school spirit, some camaraderie, some, uh, excitement, and still have some fun. Um, so, you know, we'll have a rotating trophy, and, and, you know, I think it's a tradition that we can really forward to at the end of the year. So that'll be the first year we're doing it. Um, a couple of new classes that we are offering for next year, um, in engineering, which is taught by, uh, two of them taught by, um, Mr. Gardner, and one of the things that they did, we bought a 3D printer and they assembled it and started using it, so it's really kind of from open box to end use, um, and different concepts in that class. We're gonna have a Google Labs class that we're gonna teach next year, just, um, all of the Google Suite and things that, that are available, keyboarding, and then STEM, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, um, which some of those we implemented this year, kind of felt our way through it, learned a little bit more, and so next year we'll really be taking off with those, um, full speed. Update on global logistics, uh, so, you know, last year we, we started the program, so we had Global Logistics 1, next year we'll have Global Logistics 1 and 2. Um, we've got some really good partnerships with different area businesses, FedEx, and so on. Um, so for Global Logistics 1, as eighth graders coming into their freshman year, we have 40 kids who have signed up for that. Now, if we can keep 30 with how the scheduling kind of works out, um, we'd be really excited. So it's just good to see that they're, um, interested in that concept, and we at least picked a program that is relevant and something that's, um, interesting to them, so, um, that's definitely a positive, and we'll continue to go with that. And then the last thing, um, I'm just gonna pass this out to you, in February, we applied for a Lowe's grant, and the grant was for the purpose of, um, creating a courtyard right outside the cafeteria, and, um, the vision was to kind of have some picnic tables, uh, stone where the kids can sit, go outside and eat, um, continue to have that feature of, um...
That's awesome.
...some memorial out there, so we ended up getting the grant for $4,500, so, um, I think we will probably, I just got that today, so we'll probably get going with that this summer, you know, hopefully have that running for next year.
Do they help install it, or how are you gonna handle that?
Um, well, so one of the things that they talked about in the grant was, um, you know, getting different student groups, sort of, you know, sort of any chess students, football teams, um, but really for what we want to do, we're gonna have to level the ground, um, so we'll have, you know, landscaping, do the professional piece, and then we'll get some labor, kind of help with the process.
Will there be a, uh, a print of, of, that you can see it?
Sure.
Or they would have to, they would have to know for materials, right?
Yeah, yeah, so what we did was, we basically just got kind of an estimate of what, what we were, what we were looking at, um, and then so from within the budget that we got, we'll craft what, what that's gonna work like, and, uh, you know, but I think it's a, it's a nice space that we can utilize, um, we want those kids to get outside, like this weather now, you would cook that whole winter, you know, to be able to have kids go outside and eat right out there, a lot of space, bright fire cafeteria, it just kind of makes sense to be able to have them, you know, even some of our teachers, I noticed the other day, some of our teachers go out there and get on their, on their lunch break outside, so we have, you know, very nice.
You said, you said a memorial day?
Yes, and I, and, and I came up with, um, the brick family, Christine, so, you know, we started this.
I spoke with the family and said, you know, what, and one of their wishes was that, um,
they kind of felt like, because it's a memorial, people didn't, you know, ultra respectful, but they wanted to be something to where they could go in and sit on the bench, so, you know.
Can use it, yeah.
I talked to Steve today, and I said, you know, whatever you guys want to do, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Nice. Okay, Tower?
Um, yeah, we're down on dial testing, some of the follow-up things were done today, so I think the stress level's starting to go down a little bit. Um, we'd just like to thank PTO for the teacher appreciation thing, which, uh, you know, it was, hey, lunch was great. I was hoping permission to blend wash my car, but it didn't happen. Appreciate you for that, Max.
Something works fine.
Other than that, don't really have anything else. Thanks, Derek.
All right, Superintendent.
Just a couple of things, I like to thank all those folks who voted for the school, I mean, being out to vote the polls, it was a, not a very big turnout there, it was made by a lot of our student families, but it was a turnout, a lot, a lot of older families in the district, older people.
In hindsight, I know that we can't plan it, but we had the 34th Fire Concert that night, so people, I know a lot of people didn't get there because, between work and then having to have their kids here at 5:30, you know, and I know that's...
Of course, we can't change elections.
Exactly, no. Right, but I'm just saying, that was a big group of family that were probably...
Um, um, like, dead bricks for all, so, so, here's my driver as we jumped in and out of people's yards, we ran all the signs, uh, from that stair. Um, what I want to do this summer is, only do this for those people that voted, and then I want to send them a questionnaire, just to see, you know, one yes, one no, whether you change, whether you look at it. There's a lot of things, talking to the folks coming in and out, some of them just feel like that they just don't pay your taxes, but we're very poor, which means that we can't go any lower with our taxes, so they would have to pay it, it's their, their money, the revenue that's gone to some of us. But, um, we have, uh, another daddy in 2028?
Yes.
Yeah. 1.9 now in 2020, and then a 1.3.8 in 2020, so, we're all 10, we're a little, so, and I'd like to find out how many more of those people we did.
We can't combine those two, last two?
We can, it'd be a 5'8". We have to...
We can't term it as a renewal, can we?
Combine those as a renewal, and then you only have to vote once or twice.
That's what we did with the one that we wrote on that, these two.
Right, yes.
I think it's something to look out, because they think people are just so tired of repetition.
When they see it every year, they get 10 though, yeah. And I think, and I think the letter was good, but I wish there was some other way of outreach we could explain to people.
Well, I think next time what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna, Kathy and I talked about this, we're gonna get more, a committee, get more people involved, but, um, only because I noticed at poll falls, a lot of our school age children, parents, they're not, they're not, um, so we need to get those folks out to vote, and so many have said, oh, it's just a renewal.
But that's the thing, like, we need to explain how it's...
You can't give things for free, you know, from that standpoint. And a lot of parents said, oh, well, we, no, I don't ever take anything for free when it comes to the rights, so, that's a move towards the next one, and that's it. Uh, one of the safety issues here, we've been talking about, we're gonna do our windows, I told you, in the summertime, we're working currently on the doors, uh, and the new scanners, those will be up in the morning. We're gonna take one window in each classroom and alter it so that it can be escaped.
No, that's right.
And then what we're doing, um, with the doors right now, they are, two, three doors are done, and two more to go, and those will be all re, they're all rewired, so that they all, they're supposed to open the door, and then we just have to wait for the OSOC to go back to, probably against your, okay, we're kind of slow. Our cases with the Attorney General regarding our handouts in the cafeteria and kitchen, Attorney General's office has it, so, it's just a long process. We've gone that way. Um, and House Bill 216, remember, we talked about that earlier, we did a resolution, it's now, we said it, it's now in the House, and that dealt with the deregulation act, if change OTAS, OTAS, which are the principal and teacher, um, two evaluation systems, they'll allow third, fourth, and fifth graders to test on pencil paper, if you choose to do that, um, which I think a lot of districts may choose to do, that's gonna change some of the way that the state mandates and state standards are turned down just without any school, important, for the governor's office. Also, uh, as you guys already, you all know that Jeff Swan passed away last week, uh, the request was to send donations to hospice, we were doing that, uh, for everybody, we were sending cards, we were, we were done at the hospice, so, and last weekend we finished our Gettysburg Junior High, Gettysburg Mercy trip. Um, good weather except Sunday, kids had a great time, uh, wasn't too bad, they were pretty good, but, but they enjoyed themselves. Mr. Martin?
You're up.
Um, the, uh, we wrapped up, we're wrapping up spring sports, um, again, Rose, the district tournament here this year, which is a huge honor for the school. Um, next week we start the district tournament, uh, girls advanced, pro softball team advanced, uh, which is great for them, so we play the four o'clock game next Wednesday, uh, next Tuesday, we play the four o'clock game, and then we call that five o'clock game, um, it'll be a target, I let all the parents know at any time it'll be a target, uh, we won't be in past, it's because it's no, it's just a tournament game. The boys are down there playing right now, I think they're up like 16-nothing against Lordstown, um, because of prom, they're supposed to play Thursday, Friday, because of prom, they're gonna play their game Saturday. We weren't allowed technically scheduling anything until the game had finished today, but tend to leave right now, schedule for two o'clock on Saturday, uh, with Jackson Millen, if they win their game, which they really should, so, um, we'll see what happens there, that's really what they're gonna do. Um, Mercy track, it is competing tonight in the MBAC league meet at Ridge, uh, so, Andy's there with them. Uh, Junior High wrapped up their league, uh, track meet on Monday, uh, Patsy has done a nice job with, uh, Patsy and his coaching staff, a good job with them. Uh, Ryan Henry qualified for the state track meet in both the shot and discus, currently has the best throw in the state for the shot, and that's 5'16", better than everybody in the shot, and from what I understand, he has like the third best throw in the country.
In the country, yeah.
So, he's doing incredible right now, wow, for us, for residents, you're wonderful.
He's in eighth grade?
In eighth grade, yeah. He's pretty, pretty incredible, uh, and, uh, pretty sure he's third in the state for discus. He'll compete this weekend, his land catcher, Ohio, at the state track and film meet for Junior High, so, we wish him the best of luck, um, to represent our school at the Junior High. Um, we have scheduled our physical day, which we June 6th, Dr. Kenny House has been gracious enough, do that once again for us. Um, we have, uh, we've been working with Bob Kimble and Matt Meredith, which we are coaching, we had, uh, Bob Kimble came in about three weeks ago, worked with some of our coaches, did some stuff, the training, and he's coming back next Monday again with Matt Meredith, doing some more stuff with us, with the 3D coaching stuff, trying to get that going, and work with, uh, Mr. McLean, uh, trying to do some training, trying to get that thing going, um, talk to him a little bit about that, and hoping here in June, we'll have everything outlined, what we want to do going forward in the summer, we're training our coaches, professional development, have everything outlined, and what we want to do across the board with them. The hall theme is meeting Monday the 22nd, uh, May, for, uh, I don't know if we actually nominate or, uh, Class 18 at that time, we're just gonna meet, talk about the athletes, but, um, we're gonna meet the 22nd of May.